Good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Technology. At this time, we ask you silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruptions throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time throughout the hearing, do not approach the dais. We thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. Good to see you both. Welcome to our oversight hearing on 3-1-1. I'm Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, Chair of the Committee on Technology. Today, we will be discussing New York City's 3-1-1 service. NYC 3-1-1 is the city's 24/7 non-emergency helpline connecting residents with government services and handling millions of calls, texts, and online interactions yearly. It offers support in over 175 languages and assists people with disabilities. Accessible via calls, texts, app, and online, it's the nation's largest 3-11 service, ensuring the city's government serves everyone. Importantly, it provides critical data sets for city agencies, elected officials, and everyday New Yorkers, and this information is used to make decisions about resource allocation, city needs, and opportunities for improvement. For many New Yorkers, 3-1-1 is the primary direct interaction that they have with government agencies. Given the importance of NYC 3-1-1 in our city's functioning, it's paramount that we are constantly seeking to improve it, including through technological advancements. For example, the NYC 3-11 mobile app is only in English. Submitting complaints can be complicated, and some complaint types listed in the app lacks features like attaching images, videos, or pinpointing locations accurately. Similarly, the system offers limited categories for logging complaints, and not every type of complaint is available for submission. Furthermore, after progressing through several steps to file a complaint, users may ultimately encounter an inability to submit it at all. The committee is aware that 3-1-1 acts as a conduit to other agencies and relies on the complaint types that the responding agency allows. However, as the architects of one of the most important public-facing systems, we must be responsive to consistent requests for updates to the system to be more user-friendly and work collaboratively with the responding agencies to improve the 3-1-1 program. To improve the services of NYC 3-1-1, we will be considering the following bills in the Technology Committee today. Brace yourself, it's a lot of bills. I'm just gonna read through it. Intro number 131 by Councilmember Brewer in relation to adding a 3-1-1 complaint category for noise from sirens. Intro number 422 by Councilmember Rivera in relation to requiring the Commissioner of Do-It to create a separate 3-1-1 category for rooftop activity complaints and to report annually regarding such complaints, and to require the Commissioner of Buildings to report annually regarding certain rooftop spaces. Intro 461 by Councilmember Sandra Ahn in relation to requiring human translation of the 3-1-1 app. Intro number 485 by Councilmember Julie Wong in relation to requiring the 3-1-1 Customer Service Center to provide assistance relating to affordable Internet programs. Intro number 582 by Councilmember Dinowitz in relation to creating a mobile application to support the efficient handling of 3-1-1 service requests by city employees. Intro 583 by Councilmember Dinowitz in relation to requiring the 3-1-1 Customer Service Center to provide live chat functionality. Intro number 584 by Councilmember Dinowitz in relation to providing an estimated wait time to 3-1-1 call center customers. Following to by Councilmember Dinowitz, number 588 in relation to 3-1-1 transmitting image and video data for service requests or complaints. And intro 589 in relation to requiring that 3-1-1 allow persons to request snow and ice removal on pedestrian bridges and that those reports be routed to the appropriate agency. The following bill by Councilmember Holden, number 602, in relation to reports of illegal towing to 3-1-1. Intro 626 by Councilmember Powers in relation to the use of Global Positioning System coordinates for 3-1-1 complaints and service requests. Intro number 634 by Public Advocate Williams in relation to 3-1-1 transmitting image and video data for housing service requests or complaints. Intro number 640 by the Public Advocate Williams in relation to requiring the 3-1-1 Customer Service Center to accept requests for service and complaints using video call functionality. Intro number 673 by Councilmember Carmen De La Rosa in relation to adding a 3-1-1 complaint category for dog runs. Intro number 820 by Councilmember Holden in relation to the number of steps to submit service requests or complaints on the 3-1-1 website and mobile application. And finally, intro number 822 by Councilmember Holden in relation to requiring the 3-1-1 Customer Service Center to indicate that an agency is unable to respond to a service request or complaint and implement protocols providing proof of action. Some of these bills were heard last session and address issues that have since been handled by the NYC 3-1-1 team. However, we want to make sure that we do not overlook the opportunities for improvement that inspired these bills and do our part to ensure the people of New York City receive proper service. I look forward to hearing testimony from the administration, experts, and community advocates about NYC 3-1-1, and learning about current efforts to improve this crucial service, as well as exploring further possibilities for increased access and enhancement. I'd like to thank the Technology Committee staff, Policy Analyst Charles Kim, Legislative Council Irene Byovsky, as well as Senior Data Scientist Nicholas Motalbano and James Wu, and my Chief of Staff Anna Bessendorf, and Senior Advisor Anya Lehrer for their work in putting this hearing together. I'd also like to recognize Technology Committee members that are here with us. I believe it's Councilmember Holden. Thank you for being here. And is Wong online? Okay. And I'd also like to recognize, we're also joined by Councilmember De La Rosa. I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember De La Rosa to deliver her opening remarks, followed by Councilmember Holden.
Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you to the agencies for being here. Obviously, we are all interested in 3-1-1 and how it functions and the efficiency. My bill, intro 673, is a bill that would require the Department of Information and Technology and Telecommunications to add a category through which the public may file complaints, service requests, and requests for information in relation to dog runs. The category would be available on all relevant 3-1-1 customer service platforms, including websites and mobile platforms. It may seem like a small category, dog runs, but it is an example of legislation that is requested and created by our community during our participatory budgeting process. As our constituents participated in civic engagement, we discovered a gap in reporting and tracking of maintenance issues in our public spaces, mainly in dog runs. Many of our constituents are dog owners and often take their strolls with their pets in our beautiful parks, and sometimes discover structural issues, benches, and grounds in needs of repair. With a lack of tracking and reporting mechanism, we failed to provide oversight into each corner of our open-air spaces. We believe in shared governance. Intro 673 is a product of District 10 constituents and is dedicated to their commitment to improving the living conditions of our neighborhood. Intro 673 adds a reporting mechanism and information center for dog runs across our city. By using our current 3-1-1 system, a citizen hotline that New Yorkers are familiar with, we can add another layer of oversight and follow-up on important issues that impact the quality of life of all New Yorkers and our pets. Thank you so much for moving this bill forward, and I'm looking forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Up next, Councilmember Holden.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and my fellow councilmembers. Today, I come before you not only as a councilmember, but also as a regular user of our 3-1-1 service. I use it all, every day, multiple times, so I know, I've been using it for years, and I know what it needs to really work much better. And I have some suggestions, and you'll hear some bills. This system serves as a critical link between the city's residents and the services that our government offers. It is essential that we continue to refine and improve this vital service to ensure it meets the needs of all New Yorkers effectively and efficiently. The package of bills we are discussing today, you know, including my bills, intro 602, 820, and 822, represents a significant step toward achieving some of these goals that are gonna be mentioned today. 602, intro 602 addresses a very specific, yet impactful issue: illegal towing. And we created, the city of New York created the DARP program, D-A-R-P, and Road Tow, to really stop chasing by these tow trucks. They run red lights, they go down one-way streets, and they jeopardize the public. They're still going on, they're still chasing. There's a lot of towing companies that are really rogue companies. That means they're not participating in these programs, so they chase. So we have to start enabling New Yorkers to report illegal towing activities directly through the 3-1-1 system, and it's not being done, and submit photographic or video evidence. We are enhancing accountability and providing our citizens with the tools they need to protect their property and, of course, their rights. Intro 820 simplifies the process of submitting service requests and complaints to just four steps. This is crucial to making your 3-1-1 system more accessible and user-friendly and encouraging more people to utilize it confidently. Lastly, 822 ensures transparency and accountability when an agency cannot respond to the request. Right now, especially with the police department, if they don't handle it within eight hours, they say no action was taken, and it doesn't give a specific reason why they didn't fix the problem. And that essentially upsets more New Yorkers, especially me. When I report a car parked at a hydrant, and the cops tell us it's not there, or they took action to fix the problem, that's not being honest. And that's why 822 is so important. So by requiring agency to provide proof of action and making these responses visible to the 3-1-1 system, we are building trust and ensuring no request is ignored. Together, these bills make our 3-1-1 system more responsive, transparent, and easier to use. As soon as someone who regularly uses, you know, as someone who regularly uses 3-1-1, I understand the frustrations that can arise. And I encourage, by the way, I encourage all my constituents to use the app. The app is great, it's been enhanced, it's been fixed up, it's a little bit more complicated, but it works. But there's things that, when I use it, certainly, and we talked about it many times, about pinpointing your exact location, it still doesn't do that very well. So we need to work on it. Thank you, Chair, thank you for this hearing. This is really very, very important hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, both councilmembers. Next, I'd like to read a testimony on behalf, or opening remarks, excuse me, on behalf of Councilmember Rivera regarding her bill hearing, rooftop party complaints. Good morning, and thank you for calling this important hearing and for bringing my bill before the committee that would create a 3-1-1 category for rooftop activity complaints. While we understand why people choose to gather on rooftops, it is essential that they do so safely and respectfully. Rooftop gatherings can generate excessive noise due to the way sound carries, which is disruptive to neighbors in the community. Additionally, rooftop activity can create dangerous situations and has led to fatal accidents in our district. Currently, residents do not have a convenient way to report disrupting and potentially dangerous rooftop activity, and this reporting option will improve quality of life, public safety, and our understanding of where unsafe rooftop activity is happening. That concludes her statement. And today, we will hear testimonies from the Office of Technology and Innovation, followed by testimonies from the public. Now, I want to welcome Joe Morrisrow, OTI Deputy Commissioner, 3-1-1, and Melissa Guillaume, OTI General Counsel, Legal Matters. Irene?
And before we begin, I kindly request everyone to raise their right hands. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Thank you. You might begin your testimony.
Good morning, Chair Gutierrez, and also Councilmember De La Rosa, Councilmember Holden, and members of the City Council Committee on Technology. My name is Joe Morrisrow, and I am the Deputy Commissioner of New York City 3-1-1, known as NYC 3-1-1, under the Office of Technology and Innovation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on NYC 3-1-1 operations. And with me today is Melissa Guillaume, OTI General Counsel. As New York City 3-1-1's Deputy Commissioner since 2008, I oversee all aspects of 3-1-1, from the operation of the most familiar component, the call center, to the creation and implementation of multiple customer-facing channels, performance results and quality control measures, interaction with city agencies, and data collection. When Mayor Adams Executive Order 3 consolidated the city's technology agencies under OTI in January 2022, the NYC 3-1-1 team was also united within this single office. The new organizational structure strengthens and supports continual evolution and enhancements to service delivery and customer experience. As you all know, New York City 3-1-1 delivers fast and easy access to government services and information to all New Yorkers. NYC 3-1-1 is available 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year, and through multiple channels, including the call center, and online portal, text, mobile application, and social media. Originally launched as a call center, New York City 3-1-1 has evolved into the most comprehensive municipal government service platform in the nation. NYC 3-1-1 received 37 million customer contacts in 2023, and on an annual basis receives more calls than all other U.S. city 3-1-1 call centers combined. I'm also pleased to share with the council a recent report by an independent third party on the public satisfaction with New York City 3-1-1. Call center representatives received a customer satisfaction rating of 94%, positioning NYC 3-1-1 in the top 10%, outperforming even private-sector companies. This level of public satisfaction is a testament to the dedication and commitment of the NYC 3-1-1 team that serves their fellow New Yorkers each and every day. It is important to note that NYC 3-1-1 serves as the platform to provide information and services to the public. With few exceptions, public interactions with NYC 3-1-1 result in one of the following outcomes: an information request, which is the most popular, such as "When is my trash pickup day?", a referral to an external entity, such as a transfer to the New York State Department of Labor, or a referral to the FCC, and a service request, such as submitting a ticket. We rely on our collaborative relationships with each agency to build out the service request forms and information pages, which are also known as knowledge articles, that properly reflect the mission and services for each agency or office. With respect to service requests specifically, NYC 3-1-1 does not create them in a vacuum. There must be an agency that will accept the request, investigate, and, if applicable, enforce. When an agency decides that adding a new service request is necessary, it contacts NYC 3-1-1 to create, test, and deploy a complaint form. There are various bills we will discuss today that propose the creation of a new or modified service request, some of which are in production today. I would like to invite any councilmember to reach out to OTI with gaps in service requests, so NYC 3-1-1 can loop in the potential responding agencies to see if a service request can be implemented without the need for legislation. I will now turn to the pieces of legislation associated with this hearing. Okay. Intro 131 relates to creating a New York City 3-1-1 service request category for noise from sirens. As the committee is aware, noise complaints are among the top service request types NYC 3-1-1 intakes year after year. The NYC 3-1-1 service request has a closed-loop process where NYC 3-1-1 is responsible for the triage and intake of the service request information, and the agency is responsible for investigating, responding, and updating the status of the service request once the agencies have investigated. This is the closed-loop process customers expect when filing a service request with NYC 3-1-1. Intro 131 asks that a service request be taken for siren noise, but we are unaware of any city agency that would accept such a request, making the closed-loop process that customers come to expect from NYC 3-1-1 impossible. At this time, implementation of this legislation would not be possible. Intro 422 relates to creating a separate NYC 3-1-1 category for rooftop activity service requests and to produce an annual report. NYC 3-1-1 agrees with the intent of the legislation, however, cannot meet the requirements as written because they currently do not align with the city's service request structure and process. The bill would require that rooftop activity be the complaint, such as the problem name, and the type of issue, such as noise or exceeding authorized rooftop occupancy, be a subcategory and then routed to the appropriate agency for response. The 3-1-1 service request model cannot support this data hierarchy structure. There is also a requirement to create a subcategory for public safety complaints. This subcategory is too vague, and any public safety issue call has to be triaged for potential emergency response. However, NYC 3-1-1 is already in conversations with agencies that would receive these complaints to figure out how we can create or code rooftop activity complaints within the existing service request framework. This approach will also allow the data to be available in NYC Open Data. Intro 461 relates to creating human translations for the NYC 3-1-1 app. Local law 30 requires covered agencies to appoint language access coordinators, translate commonly distributed documents into the 10 designated languages, provide telephonic interpretation in at least 100 languages, and develop a language access implementation plan, among other requirements. NYC 3-1-1 is in compliance with this law. NYC 3-1-1 provides telephonic interpretation and translation services for up to 175 languages through a third-party vendor, Language Line. Language Line is available for free to customers 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. NYC 3-1-1 provides options for customers who speak a language other than English or may be limited English proficient. For the phone channel, a customer can access announcements and messages in the integrated voice-response system in the 10 designated citywide languages. Spanish-language customers can be assisted by an NYC 3-1-1 customer service representative who speaks Spanish. Annually, New York City 3-1-1 services approximately 1 million calls in languages other than English and has provided service in 133 non-English languages over the years. The NYC 3-1-1 mobile app allows customers to connect with an agent and our vendor partner Language Line for human translation. NYC 3-1-1 has over 2,000 discrete content items called knowledge articles, and it performs thousands of edits annually, as well as revising content for readability on a consistent basis. Certain content changes require in-the-moment creation and modification, such as during emergencies. Intro 461 would require a human-translated version of the NYC 3-1-1 mobile application. To do so would require significant additional support resources so that OTI's ability to create and maintain the up-to-date content meet NYC 3-1-1 standards for customer satisfaction and service delivery. Intro 485 relates to the NYC 3-1-1 Customer Service Center providing assistance related to affordable Internet programs. We are aware that the FCC announced the winding down of the federally-funded Affordable Connectivity Program, ACP. NYC 3-1-1 is monitoring the program and will update the content as appropriate should Congress act to restore funding. As the ACP winds down, OTI continues to provide opportunities for all New Yorkers, particularly those who are historically vulnerable to being on the wrong side of the digital divide, to access the Internet and digital and education resources. The mayor's Big Apple Connect program is now deployed at all eligible NYCHA developments and provides NYCHA residents with free, reliable, and safe broadband Internet and basic cable TV. Since the initiative launched in September 2022, 121,702 households have been enrolled in the program, and 80% enrollment across the city. We also provide information on additional access points in the city. If the council is aware of programs not part of the current NYC 3-1-1 content, we would be happy to discuss further and update where appropriate. Intro 582 relates to creating a mobile application to support the efficient handling of NYC 3-1-1 service requests by city employees. As we understand intro 582, we do not believe there is a need for an application for agencies to receive service request data. NYC 3-1-1 coordinates with service request agencies to ensure they receive the service request information in real time and in a way that best suits their business-need workflow. Many agencies have their own applications they use for handling service requests. The NYC 3-1-1 application already allows service requests to be viewed via a mobile device if an agency opts in for that specific functionality. Intro 583 relates to requiring the NYC 3-1-1 Customer Service Center to provide live chat functionality. NYC 3-1-1 already offers real-time text capability through the 3-1-1 692 SMS code and through the Text 3-1-1 option on the mobile app, in addition to the call center representatives that are available 24/7. Text agents engage in synchronous written communication with customers to respond to questions and submit service requests using the existing enterprise service request format to submit to agencies. The content on the NYC 3-1-1 website and available through the mobile app already provides customers with access to information comparable to what they would receive through a live-chat interaction. It incorporates user-friendly features such as the prompts like "Need something else?" and "What do you need?", in addition to curated sections and links. Intro 583 requires an increase in resources beyond current levels to provide services that NYC 3-1-1 already offers to the public through its phone, text, mobile, and social media channels. At this time, NYC 3-1-1 opposes adding incremental resources and will continue to monitor customer feedback and industry enhancements in this area. Intro 584 relates to providing an estimated wait time to NYC 3-1-1 call center customers. NYC 3-1-1 will review queuing system options that provide estimated wait time to customers as a potential enhancement to the high-call-volume protocol. Intro 588 relates to NYC 3-1-1 transmitting image and video data for service requests. All NYC 3-1-1 service requests already accept image or video, except for Housing Preservation and Development and the Department of Homeless Services, per their request due to privacy concerns. Intro 598 relates to creating an NYC 3-1-1 service request category for snow or ice on pedestrian bridges. It is possible to file a service request today for snow on a pedestrian bridge, but it is limited to the call center. NYC 3-1-1 is in discussions with the Department of Transportation to streamline the process and make filing a service request for snow or ice on a pedestrian bridge available across all channels for the next snow season. Intro 602 relates to creating a NYC 3-1-1 service request for illegal towing by a tow truck company. NYC 3-1-1 already accepts these requests, which are routed to the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. Intro 626 relates to the use of Global Positioning System coordinates for NYC 3-1-1 service requests. NYC 3-1-1 service requests collect GPS coordinates, such as latitude and longitude, based on the customer-enabling location services in the mobile app or on the website, and by the customer confirming the address identified. If location services functionality is disabled, NYC 3-1-1 collects latitude and longitude based on the address entered by the customer. NYC 3-1-1 is exploring a new geolocator service that will take it a step further and collect latitude and longitude based on the pin drop, then identify the address in the format required by the agency based on the service request, such as address, intersection, or blockface. Funding for the enhanced mapping is being pursued. Intro 634 relates to NYC 3-1-1 transmitting of images or video data for housing service requests. As mentioned in my comments for intro 588, all 3-1-1 service requests already accept image or video. or video, except for Housing Preservation and Development and the Department of Homeless Services, per their request due to privacy reasons. Intro 640 relates to the NYC 311 Customer Service Center to accept requests for services and complaints using video call functionality. NYC 311 supports enhancements in service delivery and leveraging technology to improve customer experience when feasible. NYC 311 is opposed to elements of this bill that impose additional requirements for functionality and currently exist, specifically the minimum call taker requirement and providing recordings or transcripts to relevant agencies. The additional element of the proposed legislation enabling video call functionality requires commercial-grade technology beyond the capabilities of our current platform. This includes enhancements in security measures, user authentication, network access, and carrier considerations, bandwidth, and integration elements. In addition, an agnostic video calling platform is necessary to ensure equal access for all potential users. At present, we believe it is premature to impose this requirement through legislation, but will keep this under review and add this to the NYC 311 service delivery roadmap when implementation is possible. Intro 673 relates to creating a NYC 311 service request category for dog runs in public parks. It is already possible to file a service request for a New York City Department of Parks facility. NYC 311 is in conversations with the department to see if we can make the process of filing a service request for a dog run more streamlined. Intro 820 relates to the number of steps to submit a service request. We understand the desire to streamline the process for submitting complaints, and where possible, NYC 311 encourages agencies to collect information in an efficient way to reduce the burden on the customer. Whenever the service request form is driven by NYC 311, it always takes four steps or less to submit the service request. For many complaints via the website, NYC 311 presents the four-step process as a what, where, who, and review cycle. This allows for a consistent customer experience across most service requests. On mobile, there may be even fewer steps. There are circumstances under which an agency's form is used for intake that may not follow the same four-step pattern. If there are specific complaints that require more than four steps, we can take them under review with the agency. Intro 822 relates to requiring the NYC 311 Customer Service Center to indicate that an agency is unable to respond to a service request and provide proof of any action taken. The NYC 311 service request has a closed-loop process where NYC 311 is responsible for the triage and intake of the service request information, and the agency is responsible for responding and updating the status of the service request to communicate the outcome directly to the customer. There are thousands of different service requests with different service-level agreements, some measured in hours and some measured in days. NYC 311 is not an oversight agency and does not have the ability to know each status for the millions of service requests filed each year until the agency closes them with a description of the outcome as presented to the customer. NYC 311 can work with any agency that wishes to update and improve their messaging of service request outcomes for a better customer experience. Finally, on behalf of my colleagues and on behalf of the hard-working and dedicated 311 team, I thank Chair Gutierrez and committee members for your time and for this opportunity to testify. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you so much. Before we go on, I'd like to recognize we have some very special guests from the City Workers Bring Your Child to Work Day. We've got some visitors today. Welcome, everybody. I hope you enjoy. And I'd like to recognize that we've been joined by council members Gail Brewer, Eric Dinowitz, and council members Vicky Palladino. I'd like to pass it to my colleague, Councilmember Dinowitz, for a statement.
I'm a little nervous about all the people in the balcony now. Take your City Worker Child to Work Day?
City Worker's Bring Your Child to Work Day. Yeah. That's sweet. I know, we could have brought our kids.
I should have brought my kids. I failed as a father. All right. Don't make a 311 complaint against me, please. Well, good morning, everyone. Good morning. Thank you. I want to thank Chair Gutierrez for the opportunity to speak about a number of bills that I think will improve the 311 system here in New York City. I mean, if you could just imagine what a lot of my constituents go through, they're in the middle of a park and they see a homeless encampment or even just a homeless person. And we have big hearts here in New York City. We want to help that person. And we are told by DSS, we're told by our agencies, the thing to do is to call 311 to get the outreach person. But I have the third-biggest park in New York City. There's no address in the middle of the park, and there's no real, efficient way to help that person who's in need of help. I'm on the app right now. There's no way to geolocate where you are in the app and to transmit that information so that the person can get help. We have a lot of older adults in my district who have to go across a footbridge that goes over a highway, but there is no way on the app to request that there is snow removal on the bridge. There are people who see with their own eyes what's going on in their community, and they want to send video, but on the app that I'm on right now, there isn't a way to send video, at least not for every complaint, to 311 and then subsequently to the respective agencies to help alleviate the problem. Now, there are a lot of improvements that could be made to 311, and that's what we're looking to do today. 311 is the way that New Yorkers access city government. In fact, when people call our office and we call the agency, the first thing that the agency asks for is the 311 complaint number. But if there's no way for someone to meaningfully or efficiently get that information, we therefore are restricted in the way we are able to help our constituents. So there are a number of bills you addressed. I just want to read them again. 640 would allow constituents to video call 311 directly, and this is important to increase accessibility. Perhaps someone has hearing or verbal impairment, this would allow two-way communication with running print at the bottom of the screen in real time and live chat. 583 allows a broader number of requests to be made even when lines are busy and employees are unavailable. This is, of course, distinct from texting or a texting system. You know, 589 deals with snow on pedestrian bridges. It allows a far more encompassing range of request types to be made that creates inherent accessibility for district-specific issues. Ice on pedestrian bridges, such as the Henry Hudson Pedestrian Bridge in my district, is a safety hazard, especially, as I mentioned, for older constituents. They need to be able to report this, and my co-prime sponsor on the bill, Councilmember Nantasha Williams, has the same concerns in her district. The geo-tagging, as I mentioned, is 626 with myself and Keith Powers. And this, by the way, happened to me where I, there was a homeless person, a person in need of help on the street, and there was no address nearby for me to type in. And it was a real struggle to try to provide this person with the help they need, and that's for everything. And again, on the app, I think the only way you can geo-tag something is with rats, which, you know, we all hate. But there are other things, a fallen tree, broken sidewalks, which are, you know, abandoned cars, which don't necessarily have an address. We need to be able to transmit location data. It's 2024. And there are two bills I know aren't part of this committee, but they do, we deal with 311, so I do want to mention them. They're part of governmental operations. An agency report card, Bill 587, would create transparency on both ends. I think many of us know that you make a 311 complaint, you find that the complaint is listed as closed by the agency, even though the problem persists, and this would allow feedback, a feedback mechanism, for users to actually say whether their complaint was closed or not in a customer satisfaction, and would allow us to better address with you the efficiency and responsiveness of 311. And Intro 744 would preserve, deals with duplicate prompts, would preserve multiple requests for the same issue, rather than deleting them thereby conveying the sense of urgency and need for assistance. Again, I wish to thank Chair Gutierrez for the opportunity to speak about my legislation, which is laser-focused on finding ways this body can improve our city agency's ability to respond to the needs of our constituents. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to move on to some questions before handing it off to my colleagues, who I know are eager to explore a little bit more about their legislation. My first question, Deputy Commissioner, is what is the present headcount for NYC 311? Oh, can you turn on your mic?
Turn on. Thank you. For the call center, for the call center representatives, titled CCR, the budgeted headcount is 248.
That's how many you have?
That's, currently, we have that many, yes.
Okay. And those are for the call center operators and what is the other remaining employees?
For the organization in total, then, the total headcount is 394.
Okay. Okay. Did the number of call center operates change in the last two years?
No, it's remained as, it's remained steady.
Okay. Are any of the call operators outsourced?
We have a overflow vendor contract that handles overflow calls, that does provide call center agent resources. So that is an overflow, an outsourced contract.
Okay. And when is it determined, I guess, what is the benchmark for determining overflow calls and then using the?
The ability to do overflow is if, when volume is managed, peak volume will increase. You'll have an emergency situation, you'll have an increase in call volume. We consider that an overflow situation, so a vendor is there.
Okay.
We can rely on the vendor resources to handle any increase in call volume, is the best way to say that.
And who is, what is the name of that vendor?
The vendor is King Tele Services, and they're located in Brooklyn, New York.
Are, can you share if you're utilizing this outsourced vendor, daily, weekly, monthly? How many times monthly?
So we do utilize them daily.
Okay.
In order to have an effective overflow environment, you need to have a steady state. So when the increase does occur, you have a base that exists that you can build off of.
So daily, okay.
Daily.
And is there specific training done with this particular outsourced vendor to interface with members of the public?
Yes, there is. The vendor resources go through the same training program, they're subject to the same quality assurance and evaluation steps that city employees are, the systems are governed by OTI, the system that the vendor uses, and the practices and the policies that they follow are the same that the 311 city staff follow.
Okay. And the existing, the current contract that you have, when is that current until?
It was registered two days ago.
Oh.
And will continue through February of 2026.
Okay. And is there an RFP that goes out for this or?
Yes, there was. The current contract is the second of two-year renewals following a five-year term. So the RFP went out nine years ago.
Oh, okay. Okay, nine years ago. And for these particular operators, do they speak any other languages? Can you share a little bit more about kind of what the breakdown is?
Yeah, sure. So yes, they all, like, they all speak English, and there's a portion that are bilingual in English and Spanish.
Okay. So those are the only languages, okay. Is there any intention to create a system for these overflow operators, I don't know what the proper term is, sorry, to recruit members that speak other languages, or for now, is it primarily because that is the amount of calls that you get in English and Spanish?
Right. Yeah, right now, it's for the overflow vendor, but also for the city staff, the focus is for English and Spanish bilingual. We've learned and determined that the most expedient and efficient way to handle languages other than English and Spanish is to rely on our third-party language line.
Language line, okay. Okay. I want to move to the app a little bit before passing it on to my colleagues. Can you share how many employees are working on developing or maintaining the mobile app?
I can give some basic information. The, let's see, the current group working on the mobile app is less than 10 resources in total.
Less than 10?
Less than 10 resources in total.
Okay. Less than 10 resources, that less than 10 people?
10 people.
Okay. No, no. I never heard that before. Okay. And is that, every time you need to update the app in particular, is that happening in-house or is that one of the 10 staff members or is that a vendor being used?
Good. So OTI owns the mobile app and provides product management, setting priorities, and the leadership. A joint team of OTI and contracted vendor are responsible for the development and the maintenance. So recent release that we just had in March, that was an example of development, and then ongoing maintenance. So this joint team of city staff and contracted vendor totaling less than 10 is what's responsible.
So it's OTI and then a vendor that they choose? Do you know what the name of that vendor is?
The vendor that we use in this particular case right now is IBM.
IBM, okay. And is, are you or anyone at 311 responsible, or not responsible, but do you all get to weigh in on the selection of the vendor or is that a separate unit within OTI?
I would say there's a, there's a standard process to follow for any time a vendor's being used, and that's what we would follow within OTI or within the other group.
Okay. And IBM has been the vendor for the mobile app since when, you said?
I didn't say since when. I'm trying to think of the answer to that.
Oh, I thought you said it was recently.
Sorry, they are current, they have been. I don't know the start date, though. I'd have to check on that.
Okay. Maybe this year or?
Oh, no, longer than this year.
Okay. And, okay, okay. And what can you share about this most recent update? What are some of the features that you can tell us?
I appreciate that question because I'm very excited about the new look and the new features in the 311.
I noticed on the mobile app. Yeah, yeah, yeah. On the mobile app, you can tell it looks different, for sure.
It was released in March. I'll take a quick moment to commend the mobile app team. They did a lot of hard work, and their approach was really focused on the customer. So I appreciate the feedback we've received from council over the years that actually fed into some of that. There's a new look and a feel, there's a streamlined navigation, and there's new features in content at a very high level. My favorite is there's a new next scheduled change section on the homepage. It takes the standard daily status for parking, schools, and collection, which typically is presented in the current day, and millions of New Yorkers are interested in that information, but it adds a section that flags the next scheduled change. So you see today, and then you see what, any of those three, the next scheduled change date is going to be. It's a really cool feature. I think it's actually a pretty elegant step that customers really like. Real-time user feedback, fantastic.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry, any, anything else, any other update? Okay, thank you. And are there any plans for any other features or updates to the mobile app?
So we're always looking at how do we enhance, how do we evolve, technology changes and updates, so we're looking at that. And we're always looking for feedback, customer feedback through surveys, feedback from council members. So part of that will go into our process. I won't, don't have anything specific to share at the point, but we're open to feedback.
And I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Eric Botter, who's just joined us. I have just two more questions before I pass it off to Councilmember Holden. I'm curious about this feedback piece. Is there some kind of like a, what is the survey process? Is it on the website? Is it, are people only prompted after filing a service request? What is like the general prompt for New Yorkers to submit a survey?
So in general, we have a couple of ways you can provide feedback on any experience with 311. Structured surveys where you're able to send communication out to a customer so they can fill a survey out. There is the like, dislike, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down on our webpages, for example. And then there's opportunity to get a prompt for a survey, which you can then take, and then that goes into the process for survey.
Okay. And then whatever my colleagues shared today, I guess, is feedback?
Well, that's the customer side, correct. Feedback that we would get from council members, for example, is more direct, more specific, and we can intake that directly, don't go necessarily through a survey process. But we also have a customer experience team at 311 who plays the role of the customer. They do what we call customer journey mapping, they'll evaluate all of our tools, not just the mobile app, and as, as experts with a customer ear and a customer focus, they come up with suggestions and recommendations that can incorporate it as well.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to pass it off to my colleague, Councilmember Holden, for questions, and then Councilmember Brewer, and then Councilmember Dinowitz.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner. On the 822, Intro 822, you say you're not an oversight agency. However, if you're, I use the app because it's faster, because I do a lot of, you know, complaints on 311, and especially parking, and commercial vehicles, for instance, are a big problem in my neighborhood and many neighborhoods in district. They're parked on residential streets. What happens when we put it in, the police don't respond sometimes within the time limit. What happens when we put it in, the police don't respond sometimes within the time limit. Where, where a truck, a truck can be legally parked in New York City residential streets, a commercial vehicle, after 5:00 AM. So let's say the police respond at 5:15 AM, what they write is, no police action was necessary. Yet I put the complaint in at 9:01 PM. They're not responding, so essentially, your app does not allow, I mean, I'm asking a question here. Does, does your app allow the police to answer honestly? Or the agency to answer honestly to the specific question of a vehicle parked illegally?
Right, I appreciate the question, and I understand the intent of the question. What I would focus on is the 311 piece of that. What we work on is making sure the intake and the referral process works. So at the moment, in your example, at 9:00 PM, when you put it in place, it's available, and, and it's there. The process then goes to the responsible agency for response. We don't have the ability to govern or control the handling of that response. Our focus is making sure it's accurate and complete, basically by doing the correct setup.
So you can't, so, so the, the app doesn't allow, after it leaves us, and, and let's say, for me, on the phone, it doesn't allow the agency to type in something that they, you know, a, a sentence or two to explain the situation?
Okay, what it does do is, the process allows for that, the app itself is not the vehicle to do that. The process is, you submit the service request, it electronically goes to the responding agency
Right.
in the same system. The agency then will take action on that. Their update is not to the app itself, it's to the process, they will update the service request. That information is then available in the service request, if you, if you do a service request lookup, service request status, that their most current information from an agency will be populated there. That varies depending on the service level agreement, depending on agency, depending on the service request type. But the process allows for that, it, it's not the app, the physical app itself that's doing that.
I feel I just went around in circles. I would like honesty, and that's what this bill is about. If somebody takes the time, and here we are trying to protect our neighborhoods, quality of life, we're trying to get a car, a car ticketed at a hydrant. And then what comes back from the agency is not true, because the police will tell me, well, we couldn't see the photo, or we couldn't see this, we couldn't see that. They have excuses, but they're not giving us honesty, and that's all I'm after. If you can come up with a solution to that, if you have some, some suggestions, whether it's a pull-down menu on whatever the police see. But I put in sanitation complaints also, on property that was littered, I mean, literally, all over the place, there was debris and litter. And I know the agency didn't respond, and I know you're not an oversight, we are. But it's, if, if there's no accountability, in, in the, that means if there's, there's something on the agency's response to our complaint that could tell us they were there, that they responded. Because thi, this gets to be a situation where it's frustrating for everyone. When I put in five complaints on commercial vehicles, and all five come in with bogus information, because the cars, the trucks are still there. That's, that again, that goes on to the system, that means I lose faith in the system. I lose faith in the police, maybe, I lose faith in, in the 311 app. And, and just go back to the towing vehicles, like the illegal tow. You say, well, we, we already have a mechanism, try doing that on, on the app, you can't do it, you can't report it on the app. And you know why I don't call the operators? Because I have streets in my neighborhood, Juniper Boulevard South, Juniper Boulevard North, Juniper Valley Road. Try to report that on a 311 operator, you have to spell out everything, it's tough, I understand that, but it takes a lot more time. I'd rather use the app, the app is good, but the app is still not, there's still gaps in the app. And that's where I think we have to try to fix, where somebody, I have chasing, I have truck, trucks, tow trucks going through my neighborhood every day, chasing to accident scenes, I'm trying to correct it, I can't report that on the app. It's hard to even report it to an operator. And then on the pinpoint, by the way, where, that's a bigger thing, where I still can't put an address in. I have a lot of railroads, highways, there's no address, there's no residential. And when I try to pinpoint where I am, I have to make up an address and try to figure it out where, where exactly it is. That needs to be corrected, I know you corrected it slightly, it, it works in certain areas, but it doesn't work in City Hall, by the way. I can't get the address where I'm sitting right now. Why not? Why can't I get it?
Yeah, so I can answer that question, and you had several others.
I know, I had other questions, but answer the.
Right now, we need to upgrade the mapping capability, and it's something that is being pursued, so that you can do equivalent of a pin drop.
How far are we along? Because I got this two years ago when I came up with Local Law 66.
I'm not familiar offhand with Local Law 66, but it is.
Well, it was a law of 2021, which mandates you guys to do some research on pinpointing location, map locations.
What I can share is I know it is something that is being pursued, and being pursued for funding, and then once funding is available, to be able to build it out. But I don't have a specific time.
You don't have a specific, can you get back to us on where you are with this?
I can check with my colleagues.
I know there's been some improvement, I, I noticed a difference in the new, the app.
Since March, right, since March.
It's better. Not, still not working on many of my streets and many, and especially here, it doesn't recognize City Hall.
Yeah, the enhancements that have been pursued are intended to.
Okay, all right, if you want to answer, do you have some of the other?
Yeah, I can just, I can address some of the other items you mentioned there. So first off, I, I want to say I do appreciate the frustration that you expressed with respect to some of the handling. With regard to the intent, you'd asked if we could take a look at the scenarios you described, happy to do that, we go back to our agencies. I will go back to the process just to reiterate it, because I feel like I left you in a, in a loop there, as you said. And I'll just reiterate, the steps are, you submit it through the app, that's instantaneous, that service request goes to the agency. Any subsequent updates, the agency initiates. And once they update that, that is available by checking the status. So that can be on the app, that can be mobile, you could, I'm sorry, a website, or you could call. So that process does exist. And I think the other.
I, I just don't know, because I get conflicting messages, I'll, I'll get messages from the police that they can't see what I sent, from some officers. I don't know if that's true, but I'd like to actually see on their, their devices, what, when I put something in, what actually do they see? Because I'll, I, I get information from certain agencies, they didn't see a photograph when I sent two or three.
I said, yeah, I, I can say from the front-end side, where 311 is responsible for the intake and the, and the
Right.
transmission of that, if you think about what's on the app and what you filled out, that's the information that's available to the agency.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you Chair, sorry for the extra.
No, no worries, thank you, he might, there may be some follow-ups, Councilmember Holden. Okay, so I'll come back to you, okay. Next, we have Councilmember Gil Brewer, followed by Councilmember Dinowitz, and then Councilmember Botcher.
Thank you very much, thank you Deputy Commissioners, always nice to see you, and congratulations to the Chair for going through such a long list, I heard it when I was coming in. My question, also, I just want to let you know, some years ago, not recently, Joe, I had a friend who was crossing the Triborough Bridge, Triborough, and they watched somebody jump, but they couldn't get 311 to give them the right information. So they were, the person jumped, and that was the end of that, but it wasn't possible to give an address, I'm just pointing that out. My issue is first, the mentioning of sirens and the hope that 131. I know you indicated that it wasn't possible, but I didn't really understand your loop issue. Because my understanding is that there are 20 noise categories, even some from the streets, you know, loud music apparently is one, and loud talking. I didn't know that was against the law. But the issue is, why not also include sirens? Because my understanding is it would go to Department of Environmental Protection, that would be the right agency, I would think. And I have to say, if you want to keep quality of life on the list of how to address some of these concerns, sirens is right up there. People complain constantly, and of course, that's a different topic, we need to try to address the siren noise. But I would like to understand more as to why you feel that it is not possible to include that as one of the 20 categories.
Councilmember, thank you for the question, and if I may also say, thank you for the support of 311 over the years.
Since the beginning, since day one.
Since day one, indeed, 20, 21-plus years now.
And I was there, thank you.
In, in short order, on, on the siren, there's not an agency that currently accepts that complaint. So the 311 process is dependent on an agency being responsible and responding to the complaint. So without that, we don't have the ability to take the complaint.
What's with, can Department of Environmental Protection that's supposed to handle noise? Why would they not take that, and why shouldn't they be mandated to take that?
Fair question, I, I can't speak on behalf of the Department of Environmental Protection, or another agency that may or may not be able to take that, but that is our current.
So I'd have to mandate that the Department of Environmental Protection take the complaint, and then 311 could do it, is that what you're saying?
I would say we need an agency that would take the complaint in order for us to build the front-end intake process.
Okay, because I have to say, I do think, with all due respect, that when you hear, what do people do now? When they complain, it just gets lost, in other words, you complain that the ambulance is making a lot of noise, which I get tons and tons of complaints about. And I guess people call 311 and nothing happens, how would they, how would that get responded to? Dear constituent, I'm sorry, we can't help you?
What we have is, if, if it's not something we get to complain for, we will let the customer know that that's not something we can take a complaint for. We will also likely check to see if there's an emergency or a dangerous situation associated with it.
There's no dangerous situation, they hate the noise.
Yeah, understood.
Okay, so that's a really, I must admit, if, if you get those kind of complaints, it would seem to me, because we're one at city and one administration, I would then say, we need to fix this, we need to find an agency who would take it, and I will work on that, I got it. But I'm just saying, that's the kind of thing that makes me crazy, when there's a problem and it doesn't get fixed, even though the public is quite adamant that it's a problem. So I will tell RIT that he needs to take this as his complaint, as the commissioner. The other thing I just want to ask just quickly is, you have, I know you have King, because I can tell when I call, whether it's CUNY, King, or a New York City employee. And I can tell them exactly who they are. How many CUNY, and how many King, and how many New York City in that division that you just gave, in terms of employees?
Sure, I'm happy to.
I actually can tell them what they are when they talk.
I appreciate that, I can give an update on, on all three of those. The headcount for call center representatives, the, the city staff 311 employees, known as CCRs, is 248.
Okay.
The King universe is not done by headcount, we actually purchase production hours
Okay.
as part of the contract, so we need one hour worth of work, they could cover that with one qualified person, or, or split the hour between two qualified people. So we look at that as budgeted production hours on a monthly basis, there's no headcount specific. CUNY, and I appreciate you recognizing the CUNY program, also pred, goes back to the beginning of 311, is one of our, our best programs and our best partnerships.
Yes, it does.
As you can imagine, a lot of CUNY students have taken the opportunity to start at 311 and gone on at 311 and other city agencies. Currently, our headcount for CUNY students is approximately 40, I, I would say in that ballpark, I wouldn't give you an exact.
Okay, and then the other question I have finally is, what is the, like, number one complaint that you can, is there such a thing other than sirens? Is there a number one complaint that you can't answer because of some, either bureaucratic, or there's no answer to be able to give to people, et cetera? What, because that makes people really frustrated, so do you have such a listing or diagnosis to be dealt with, et cetera? That's, and trying to figure out where there might be some challenges that maybe we could help address.
Well, I appreciate that question, it'd give me a chance to, to give you a little bit of a, a piece of the process with that. If there is a, something we don't have an answer to, or an outcome for, we'll call it an unmet need. We have a process working with every city agency, whether it's an agent who gets that information, whether our team gets it, whether we get input. And we have a dedicated group on the 311 side, and dedicated resources at each city agency to address just that. If it's new from the agency, they let us know, if it's an unmet need, we contact the agency and we work through that. I will say that, again, citing kind of the history of 311, in the early days, as you can imagine, there were far more unmet needs, and they were built out over time. We used to have about 100, a couple of hundred pieces of content in our system, and now we have over 2,000 pieces of content. So it's very rare we get something that's within city jurisdiction that is not responded to, but if we do, there is a process for it.
Okay, so why wasn't sirens dealt with in that context?
In this case, we were to pass that information on to agencies that may be the likely place for that, but until an agency is set up to handle those, or to accept those for 311, we don't have the ability to take.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I will fix that problem.
Thank you, thank you Councilmember Brewer, next we have Councilmember Dinowitz.
Thank you, good, is it still morning? Yeah, good morning, you never know what time it is, you always have to look at your watch, good morning Deputy Commissioner, how are you? That's a working clock, huh? That's a not-working clock, can we fix that? Technology Committee Chair? I just, I thank you for your testimony, I want to talk about just a few of the bills. I want to start with 583, which deals with live chat. In your testimony, you said that they offer real-time text capability. I, I have a few questions about that, and then a few comments, the chats, I assume, are logged and kept on file?
We currently don't do chat, sorry.
You said that you do text.
Text, we do, yes.
That's what I meant, yeah, are the texts.
Yes.
Chats, I'm using colloquially, the, the text chats.
We, we share that, I just wanted to be clear.
Thank you.
So yeah, there is the inability, there is, the, the text process does allow for capture and transcription of, of the interaction.
And those are, and those are logged and kept for how long?
I don't know the, I don't want to quote the retention period, there is a retention period, I don't want to quote that mistakenly, so it's something I could check and get back to you on that, but they are logged and they are kept.
And the chats are transmitted to the relevant agencies?
No, the content that's in the chat is free text, right, back and forth between the customer and the agent. If a customer is looking for information, the agent, the text agent can satisfy that just by answering the question via text, back and forth. If it's a service request where we've got to collect the what, the where, the who, then that's done by the agent, entered into the same CRM system we use in the call center, and that you would use online. And that's what's transmitted to the agency.
It's funny, I know this is not what you meant by free text, but you know that text messages are not free.
Correct, and carrier charges may apply.
That's, that's, that's the phrase, right.
And that's the phrase we use, but I meant free text feel, let me say.
I know what you meant.
Unstructured text.
But understand that, that for many people who may want to use this text functionality, they are now paying, where other people may, may not, if they're just using the app or calling, they're now paying for a service that is otherwise free. And you just redid the app, I do want to acknowledge it's much better looking, and it's much more user-friendly. And a better feature to add to that, I assume you have, it's a contract with an, with a, with a vendor who's using the app?
It's led by, it's led by OTI, OTI is.
Internal, so you can make changes to it very easily?
Changes can be made, but every change requires resources, requires funding to, to those resources. But yes, OTI is the owner of the app, and relies on in-house city staff, as well as some resources from a contracted vendor, to make, to make changes and to maintain the, the app.
So you see, one of the issues, I mean, one of the issues is technologically, a user interface, such as the beautiful app you just updated, is much more inviting, and this is something that most companies do, most companies, I don't think, send you to a separate text messaging system. You know, think about the big companies like, you know, Amazon, we're using, it's right on the app, right there for a user. But there's also the issue of cost, because by not including texting right in the app, or live chat functionality in the app, you are sort of outsourcing that cost to New Yorkers, who are already paying for the service with our tax dollars. You're levying an additional charge on many people who would like to be able to live chat, that live chat functionality. I want to move on to the geolocating, I, that's an easy one, that's why I'm co-sponsoring with Councilmember Keith Powers. You said that is being worked on?
Yep, there's a project that is looking at how do we upgrade it, and specifically, I'll, I'll describe it as the end result being that you can have an accurate pin drop location.
Right, and what's the timeline on it?
I don't have the timeline, I know it's an ongoing plan, I, I don't have the timeline at this point, something we didn't get back to you on.
Yeah, I mean, have you set, have you, as Deputy Commissioners, as Commissioners, set goals for, goals for it? Whether they're met or not, have you set a goal for when you want users to be able to drop that pin?
We, we have projects, and each project has a goal and a timeline, I'm, I would be risking giving you a wrong answer if I tried to answer that right now.
Yeah.
Something I would get back to you on.
And they were sworn in, right? So that would be like perjury, we don't want that.
Thank you.
So yes, please, please, please get back to me, I mean, this is, this is one of the, the bigger ones, again, you know, anyone who has a park in their district or a stretch of road where there is no address, is unable to meaningfully engage and with, with the very service we are told to engage with. The estimated wait time, Bill 584, talk to me about roadblocks to. The estimated wait time, Bill 584, talk to me about roadblocks to providing estimated wait times for people who call.
Appreciate that one, given the opportunity to talk a little bit on that.
Yeah.
It's something that we have looked at. You mentioned it as part of the high-call volume protocol, which we have a very robust high-call volume protocol. In the interest of time, I didn't spell it all out, I'd be happy to at some point. So we've looked at estimated wait time in a number of ways. As you may know, from an industry perspective, there's mixed reaction to that. The proponents see the value of it, practitioners often see that it creates, it can create more complications than it can solutions. So we look at it closely and try to monitor that, but what we've looked, what we will do for this particular bill is, look at it, continue to review it, continue to revisit it, and see if it's something we can add to the high-call volume protocol.
Okay, well, from the perspective of my constituents who are on these calls and don't know how long they have to wait, it is, I am a proponent, let's put it that way, and I think it would be, it's an important feature to include from the user interface, transparency and information is only a good thing for users. The snow and ice removal, can you talk a little bit about what prevents specific items from being listed on the app, or for being accessible on the app?
So the snow and ice removal, two parts to that, so specific to your question about what's on the app. In large part, it's to some degree, real estate, right, real estate on the app itself. So if you're familiar with the new one, the upgraded app, I appreciate the feedback on that. There are a number of service requests that are grouped by topics, and then within those topics, you know, you can click on each of those, we call those, you know, native to the app. More broadly, though, through the app, you can access the 3-1-1 online website in a mobile-optimized way. So every service request that is available on the 3-1-1 website is available through the 3-1-1 mobile app. There are hundreds and hundreds of service requests. To list each one in a grouping, or a chronological, or, I'm sorry, an alphabetical order, would take up so much real estate and further frustrate customers. So what's on the mobile app tend to be the high-volume and/or the ones that are considered, you know, mobile, on-the-go type of needs.
Right, I see that. I mean, in this particular category, there are seven, which include home or business, parks, schools, bus shelter, police station, post office, subway station. How many, I mean, if it's hard to find, it's hard to even ask the question, how many requests you get for snow removal on pedestrian bridges, if it's the case that people can't find it on the app, and they have trouble finding it on the website? But do you know how many requests you get for that?
We would have the information on how many requests we get, and you can take that through, as those come in beyond just the app, we would know the count on that. Don't have it handy, obviously, it's only during snow season, but it is something we could look at historically to see what we've received.
Right, well, all of these are only during snow season, I mean, by, although with our weather now, who knows, it may snow next week. It says Gail Brewer, it's not going to snow next week, you never know. But, you know, if I'm looking at snow or ice on the street, I mean, this is something I've gotten numerous complaints about, and taking it to the website, I mean, I think kind of the point is, I think Councilmember Holden made reference to this, I mean, this is 2024, this is, apps are the way most people, I think, engage with a lot of services, private and public, that they come to use. You know, the MTA, you get on the train, it doesn't direct you to a website to purchase your railroad ticket. If I get an Uber, I'm not directed to a website to order my cab. And in the same token, people in my district who are requesting service for snow and ice removal on pedestrian bridges, shouldn't be directed to another place, it should be easy on the app. And given the number of snow or ice on the sidewalk categories, it's only seven, adding another one would not be, you know, arduous or difficult, I think, for the app to do. I don't want to take too much, I just want to do one more, and that is audio and video, whether you're listening to one right now, or you're, so just kidding, submitting it. I'm on the app right now, again, and I see that there's a way to submit up to three photos, which is, I think, a change from what the old app did, where in many cases you had to compress it, or, but there's no option for video.
It takes media, photo or video.
I would, I, let's talk about it at another time, because I want to show you, I want to be respectful of everyone's time, but I just tried three phones, and there was not the ability to upload or to take video in the app. Images, yes, video, no.
Okay.
And so if there was an intent to do that, I am here to tell you, it is not done, but the bill would ensure that that is, that you are able to upload the video and the photos, and then I just want to confirm that you said, those photos and videos are subsequently sent to the relevant agency?
That part I can confirm, yes, they are.
Okay, okay, great, thank, that is all, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, we'll have questions from Councilmember Eric Botcher.
3-1-1 service requests for homeless assistance, or regarding homeless encampments, my understanding was that those are supposed to be routed to the Department of Homeless Services and contracted homeless outreach workers. What we're finding in our district office is that in almost every case, they're being referred to the NYPD. Are service requests for homeless assistance, should they be routed to DHS service contracted outreach workers, or should they be routed to the NYPD?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember, and I appreciate the distinction. I can speak to the 3-1-1 process with respect to that, and which is the intake piece, and I'll split them the way you did. For a homeless person assistance, that is routed to DSS, Department of Social Services, Department of Homeless Services. If there's a request, if the filing is for an encampment, I believe, I want to make sure I get the sequence straight, the information is sent to NYPD to identify as an encampment, and then if, then from there, they notify Department of Social Services.
I'd love to talk to you more about how that's playing out, because what we're finding is that, in almost every case, the response that we get back rather promptly, is this service request has been closed by the NYPD. And I would suggest that we rework the way that that takes place. I think the Department of Homeless Services should be the primary responder to that, and I think we should, we should talk to you about what kind of feedback we're getting, to make sure that that process works better.
I appreciate that, and yes, we look forward to that.
In your testimony, you talked about the 94% satisfaction rating for the call center representatives, and I agree that they, they're great. But arguably, the more important customer service rating would be the satisfaction with the service that people are getting as a result of 3-1-1. Can you speak to the satisfaction ratings that you're getting in your surveys for the level of satisfaction that people are getting at the end of the 3-1-1 process?
Great, again, thank you for the question, it gives an opportunity to talk a little bit more, and I'll first say thank you for recognizing the satisfaction with the agents and your feedback on the agents. It goes a long way, it's a challenging position, and any sort of recognition is a morale boost for the team, so thank you for that. With respect to the satisfaction a customer would have with the agency's fulfillment of the process, the CTO, CTO Frazier, had mentioned this at a previous hearing last month, it is something we're looking at, it's something we're looking to be able to say, okay, let's get the customer feedback once an agency has completed the service request, and then show what that is. That's work in progress, something that we are looking to move forward on, I don't have a specific date for it, but it is something in the works.
In our last hearing, I did ask Mr. Frazier about that, and he said that he thought by the end of the second quarter, you'd be able to post some kind of resolution satisfaction dashboard that we could look at to get an idea of the customer satisfaction with the outcomes of 3-1-1. Is that something, a process that you're familiar with?
Yes, I'm familiar with the process, I'm familiar with the timeline, I believe he said the end of the second quarter, possibly third quarter, so, but I am familiar with the process, and that's what I referred to a moment ago, that's what we're working on.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmembers. I'm going to ask a few more questions. I want to dig in a little bit into privacy and data, and would love for you to share if there are any specific security measures in place to protect user data and security, both on the site or on the app.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that question, because it gives us an opportunity to talk about a very important topic. I'll speak at a high level and a general level first, but I'll also say I have very good colleagues that work within OTI, including the city's chief privacy officer, and our CISO, our chief information security officer, who would both be, oversee the areas that drive our policies and our adherence to those policies. So ultimately, I would defer to them on anything that's specific or related to the policy. But from a 3-1-1 perspective writ large, we have privacy measures, we have privacy policy, it's available to customers, it applies no matter which process you're using, which channel you're using, phone, online, social, et cetera. And it is something that is very important to us. The ability for 3-1-1 to work for New Yorkers is largely based on a compact between customers and 3-1-1, and we really make sure we are looking out for the customer's interests, for the customer's need. Privacy goes a long way with that, right? It builds trust, it gives the customer confidence, it allows the customer to call, it removes potentially the customer, a barrier to call, if the customer's afraid of their status, of their situation, of anything. We really have stressed over the years, and engaged with city council on a number of times, on the things that we offer to do that. For example, 3-1-1 is largely anonymous for the public. We don't need your name, we don't need your contact information for general information. We often don't need your name for our service request, and don't necessarily need to take your name for a service request. That's something we've really pushed and promoted over the years, and it gets to the broader issue of privacy, but also the broader issue of this compact and this trust with the public.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just want to push back a little bit. If you could just make the distinction between what 3-1-1 is asking for and the agency in that service request. So I know for a fact DOH asks for information, and they actually, in many ways, need it to be able to access. So if you could just make that distinction?
Certainly, yes. So when you're doing a, so for general information, what we call information provided, which is about 70% of all the contacts to 3-1-1, there's no service request, there's no complaint, and there's no need, maybe one or two exceptions, where there's an application or a form, but there's generally no need for customer information. For a service request, 3-1-1, again, does the intake. If an agency needs contact information in order to fulfill on the request, such as a specific location, like an apartment, then that would be something we would do in the intake process, and that's what gets sent.
And do you all, does 3-1-1 keep that information?
No, that information is transmitted through the service request, and then it goes to the agency.
To the agency, okay.
And then for other ones, customers can choose to give their contact information, but the majority of service request types do not require the who in order for it to be fulfilled.
And how often does the privacy policy get updated?
I would, I'm going to be nonspecific, but I'll say on a very regular basis. I think we've updated it fairly recently, and, you know, various levels of changes, sometimes could be minor changes, some can be substantive updates, but it's something that's a living document.
Okay, and are there any factors that lead to a change in terms of use of agreement?
I think a lot of it becomes, it comes from the learning and the growth in the area of privacy. As I mentioned, OTI has a privacy officer within OTI, but also serves in the, for the city capacity, a good colleague, and we consult with him and his team to make sure we have the most current information.
Okay, thank you. I would just want to still dig into privacy and data. We can, we've learned that according to Apple and Google App Stores, policies revealing in apps' data practices, the NYC 3-1-1 mobile app sends user data to third parties. The data is not encrypted in transit, and the data cannot be requested to be deleted. What third parties are receiving user data?
Thank you for the question and for the information. I'm not sure, I don't know what the answer to that would be, I'd have to check and get back to you.
Okay. All right, let, cancel that, the next question, but let me ask you one, you might have to get back to me on this as well. Can OTI ensure that mobile app data is encrypted in transit, or that it's up, or is that up to another party?
I understand, and I'll put that in the same category, I'll look into it, I'll talk to colleagues, and we'll get back to you on that.
And similarly, users' data being deleted, or not, like, the option for that data not, a user cannot, at this point, request that the data be deleted, is that something that OTI can allow for?
I appreciate it, if you'll allow me the opportunity to look into that and get you an accurate and current answer.
Okay. Hopefully, you got the answer to the next one. So according to the existing privacy policy, 3-1-1 does not sell, rent, or otherwise use information for commercial or marketing purposes. I know from the Play Store, it says that data, data may be shared, it's right on the, when you go to download the app. What purposes is the, is 3-1-1 sharing user information for?
I do understand the question, I will need to get back and consult with colleagues in order to give you an appropriate answer for that.
Okay, this seems really important, so yes, we'd love to follow up. On phone calls, 3-1-1, are those phone calls recorded?
Calls are recorded.
Okay, and what is the purpose?
What is the message?
The purpose, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, for quality control and training purposes.
Okay.
There is an announcement on the messaging when you call, that for that very reason, calls are recorded for quality purposes. We use them as developmental opportunities, so we can coach and develop agents.
Oh, okay, and how long do you keep those recordings for?
The retention period, I believe, is 14 days.
Oh, okay. Okay, 14 days. I'm going to ask a little bit more about the website experience. It's my understanding that the NYC 3-1-1 appears to collect URLs and, of websites that users visit prior to the visiting NYC 3-1-1 website, are you, are you aware of that?
I am aware, I understand what you're asking, what you're saying, and I am aware, I'm not sure I would be able to answer.
Do you know, my question is just why?
Oh.
Why, it's, and I know that they collect the websites, and, yeah, and what? And the domain names.
Domain names, okay.
Associated with that device.
I would, again, I would appreciate the opportunity to pull together an answer for that, based on talking with my colleagues, instead of trying to answer off the top of my head.
Okay, I appreciate that. The website uses many cookies, however, it does not have the banner to provide the option for users to opt out. Do you plan to provide that option for New Yorkers?
If I may, I'd like to get back to you on that.
All right, okay. Let's skip, we'll send you these following questions, as I think we're going to get the same responses, respectfully.
Appreciate that.
Now, I have a couple more questions, and then I'm going to pass it to Councilmember Holden, and then Councilmember Brewer. Great. So I, in the last hearing that we had, which was in June of 2022, I think we were still virtual, so dig deep, there was testimony that 3-1-1 would extend services to WhatsApp messaging platforms. What can you speak about that? Did this happen, where are we, is this still going to happen?
Gotcha, yep, again, thank you for that, and good recall on that, on that particular item. So it is still part of our roadmap, we've not gone live with WhatsApp, we've looked at it, there's a sequence of events we're doing to upgrade our platform, our technology platform, that will then allow us to insert WhatsApp into that. So we've moved forward with something called omni-channel, kind of a generic term, but once you have that, that will allow agents to then be in a situation where they could do a text, they could handle a WhatsApp, they could handle a phone call. So we need to build that out to then be able to insert WhatsApp into that. So it's on our, it's on our roadmap, it's on our radar, we don't have a particular timeframe for it at this point.
And just curious, what is the reasoning for WhatsApp specifically?
The reason for WhatsApp?
For wanting to utilize or integrate WhatsApp?
To expand access to New Yorkers.
But there are other, there are other apps, is there something specific to WhatsApp?
Yep, research that we've looked at, and the feedback that we've gotten, it's the app that is most used that we're currently not supporting. It's the place where people go.
And how do you think, because WhatsApp, and I'm familiar with it, I have it, my family uses it, they have a very explicit privacy policy that they're constantly updating, how do you think their privacy policy and NYC 3-1-1's privacy policy are aligned? And are you in talks?
Gotcha, so I can't say we're in talks, I will say they would have to be aligned in order for us to be able to bring WhatsApp onboard. So again, we in order for us to be able to bring WhatsApp onboard. So again, we see it as an opportunity to expand access, in particular to some customers who may not be familiar with or use 3-1-1, and maybe that WhatsApp becomes the way they do that. But like every other channel we do, any other customer interaction we have, it would have to adhere to the privacy standards.
Is there, are there any plans to integrate 3-1-1 into the MyCity portal in the future?
The MyCity portal is up and running in a number of categories. We have a very complementary relationship at this point in terms of what a customer can do and what MyCity is specific for and what 3-1-1 online, as we call it, is. So we will, I would say we run in parallel, but not necessarily plans to integrate anything at this point in time.
Okay. And are there any plans to incorporate generative AI into any of the services?
So generative AI, as I think we all know, is something that has emerged and advanced rapidly in the last couple of years. Like any technology, we are looking at anything that may enhance service delivery, anything that may be better for New Yorkers. So we are doing, I'll say, due diligence in that area and trying to understand the AI offerings and then how they could and would fit into the current, either the current channels that 3-1-1 has or potentially new channels.
So I'm sorry, OTI is currently looking at generative AI as a tool or ways to integrate to the 3-1-1 service?
Yeah, OTI, yeah, OTI is doing a number of things. As you may know, they, as you probably know, they, OTI has issued the mayor's AI action plan in October of last year, recently updated in March, which provides governance and guidance. So that's kind of our umbrella. But from a technology standpoint and also from a customer service delivery standpoint, we are looking at AI, all aspects of AI, and looking towards what could that do for New Yorkers, what could that do for 3-1-1?
Okay, that's exciting. I'm going to pass it off to council members Holden, Brewer, and then Palladino for questions.
Thank you for the second round, Chair. Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. Just a couple of questions. During COVID, and we would call 3-1-1 to get an operator, it took five minutes because you had to listen to tons of messages. I understood that, but I said, one of my suggestions at the hearing back then, I said, what about pressing zero to get a live operator? You know, because I don't need to sit through five minutes of this stuff. Now it's two minutes and 35 seconds of messages, which I don't want to, I'm not interested, I just want to report something in my neighborhood. Can you press zero? Because I made a suggestion. Can you press zero to get a live operator?
At the current time, I do not believe our system allows that.
Problem. There it is. That's why, again, people want to make reports, but they got to listen to stuff that they're not interested in. You shouldn't force anybody to listen to messages that they don't want to hear. User-friendly, zero. Press zero, get a live operator. That's a normal operating procedure for most messages. Please work on that. The second thing, according to your report pursuant to Local Law 66, I'm back to this, of 2021, due to the legacy systems used by some agencies, which you had mentioned, even if the device shows the exact location, the service request must be identified by street address, intersection, or landmark place. One of the proposed improvements stated in the report was to allow users to submit service requests by leveraging their mobile device location or by picking a point on the map. All right? It was also stated that this project was in progress, you had mentioned it's still in progress, but it was expected to be completed by the first quarter of 2023. Your agency said that. All right? We're now a year later. It still hasn't been completed. So what's the holdup?
The work itself, as I said, we are looking at, we have a project to enhance the mobile app and enhance the, I'll call it the, the location capabilities. I don't have specifics that I could give you at this point.
Maybe you could call Uber or Lyft because they could figure it out, but you guys can't. This is unacceptable. You know, you have people that want to help their neighborhoods and fix the quality of life and keep it or keep it, and we're not getting service from that. That's a very, very important feature. If I call 911, they should know where I am with my phone if my location services is on, right? They should know where I am. I shouldn't have to spell out the name of my street address. Same thing should 3-1-1. We, come on. And you said a year ago, it was going to be implemented and we still haven't, we're still waiting. So that's why we're oversight. You guys are not doing what you should be doing. If you can get back to us, this committee, as to when this will be rolled out, because it's a very, very important feature. And that's why, again, I don't use the live operators because it takes too long and I call in so many times. And I shouldn't have to listen to two minutes and 35 seconds of information that I'm not interested in. And you should, you should do that, too. So there's two major things that I'm concerned with, location and also in listening to messages I don't want to hear. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councilmember, thank you for the feedback.
Thank you, councilmember. Next, we have councilmember Brewer, followed by councilmember Palladino.
Thank you very much. Obviously, a lot of people are listening to this hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair. The whole world is listening, I swear. And one of the complaints that they're getting are noise. Noise is such a quality of life issue, as you know. And they say that when they call about jackhammering, which only takes place for a certain period, it takes 10 days, they're told it'll get back to them in 10 days. That's not going to work. So how do you address things that are more time sensitive on 3-1-1? Apparently, this consumer, and they're on watching now, indicates that they called about jackhammering and they were told in 10 days, 3-1-1 will get back to them. So does that mean that somebody's investigating and that's why it takes that long? But they, it sounds like we're going to listen for the jackhammering in 10 days and of course, the jackhammering could be over. So how do you address those, those really pesky noise issues like that?
Well, councilmember, thank you for the question and then thank you for relaying the real-time consumer question. What you described sounds like something that 3-1-1 handles the intake on and would go to the Department of Environmental Protection as in what I put in the broader category, noise complaint. I'd have to check on what the service level agreement is and what the steps are, but it could very well be what you described, that the report goes in and that triggers something for the agency to be able to pursue. But I'd be a little bit beyond my headlights trying to get at what the agency actually does without being able to look it up.
Okay, well, I can follow up also, but I'm just saying things like that are what bother people. Obviously, wait time is another one. So those are the kinds of issues that I think in order to get more people even to use 3-1-1, they have to be addressed. Second quick question, I'm obviously very partial to the open data platform. So that is based on 3-1-1 data. So do you work with open data platform staff? Is it completely separate? How does the data go from 3-1-1 to the open data? And of course, there are issues there, real-time, updating, so on and so forth. So how does the coordination take place?
Great. I do appreciate that question, give you a chance to kind of share how we're working in that. In the beginning, I mentioned the mayor's executive order that created OTI. That brought 3-1-1 and what was the mayor's office of data analytics, now OTI's data analytics, headed up by my colleague Martha Nork. We work hand in hand with that team on the open data site. Two of the biggest data sets, the most popular data sets, there's many popular ones, as you know, are service request data from 3-1-1 and then call center data. The service request one is the most interesting for people because it's got location information and other factors. So that is something we do work with OTI. It's kind of, it's a closed loop. The process gets updated on a regular basis, on a daily basis. If there's any enhancement, if there's any issues, we have a direct connection with the team that supports that.
Okay, so you work with the team because there is a box, so to speak, that you can make complaints and this is what needs to be improved. So you and the other team work on trying to respond to those complaints. Is that a correct statement?
We do, the process is to do that. We do have access to that. We also would have other access to get feedback from the public. As you know, and I think you've participated in the past, a number of open data events is also kind of a hotbed to get feedback and get information. So that's something we do as well. But from a process perspective, yes, we work with the open data team.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Next, we have questions from councilmember Palladino.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm going to take you back to page one of our list of questions here. I, too, I'm in an aging community and I'm hearing a lot of talk about all the new technology. So I want to take you back a decade to when people call, because they do call in my district, 3-1-1. So going back to page one of the questioning, how many employees and what's the present headcount for NY, for calling 3-1-1?
Great. Thank you for the question and thank you for the time period. I can appreciate that. One of the things we're proud about at 3-1-1 is we have multiple channels to serve multiple customer needs because everyone, many people have different preferences. To answer your specific question, the headcount for 3-1-1 city staff, the call center representatives, the frontline agents who are handling the calls, is 248.
That's what I have. Okay, I just want to double check because I wrote down the numbers. But when we have nine million people in the city and in my district, over 300,000, 248 people to answer a phone is not really that great. Now, you also said you outsource. So how many operators additional to that do you have at your outsourcing facility?
Great. Appreciate that question as well. There's two pieces we, that augment the resources that we have, the city resources. The, what we have is an overflow vendor contract and we have an arrangement where we, we bucket it as production hours. So I don't have a headcount number for you, but what we do is we purchase hours from the vendor.
So how many hours do you purchase?
We can purchase anywhere from, per month, we can purchase anywhere from 15,000 or more hours per month, which then equates, if you do the math, equates to the amount of coverage that you need.
Okay.
We also have a program with CUNY, CUNY Research Foundation, where college students can work at 3-1-1 as call takers on a, on a part-time basis. They basically work three shifts a week. And that allows us to augment the full-time staff.
Well, so far, I'm not real happy. Okay, next is with everything that's going on, and we see it's going on in our city right now, what is the protocol that 3-1-1 has in Goff a Bit of an Emergency?
Great. Thank you for that question. I do appreciate it. We had referenced a little earlier what we call the High Call Volume Protocol. It's something that 3-1-1 has really evolved and honed over the last several years, going back at least 10 years. From the beginning of 3-1-1, councilmember Brewer referenced that earlier, was met with a transit strike and a blackout within its first couple of years. Over the years, we've dealt with Hurricane Irene, Hurricane Sandy, we've dealt with the pandemic. So we have a High Call Volume Protocol that factors first all channels, but I'll speak specifically to the calls, the phone channel first. First and foremost, it's information. We found that most people need real-time information on the topic at hand. Our telephone system allows us to provide automated announcements, messaging on that particular topic. And the majority of customers get that information, consume it, understand it within 30 seconds to one minute of calling. That's our number one act for high, high call volume situations. What's the issue? What's the city's status? What's the information the public needs to know? We have a number of other steps that go into High Call Volume, everything from staffing to how we...
But there's no separate number, that in case of an emergency, please call. Okay? Now, in Goff a Bit of an Emergency, you're going to have, out of nine million people living here, you're going to have about three to four million calls in probably two hours' time, an hour's time. I know my office will probably get about 1,000, and that's no joke. And I just want to know, it doesn't sound like you guys are really set up at all for an emergency. You're having time and you're having trouble enough just keeping up with our everyday issues, dealing with our everyday agencies. I just want to veer off a second to what my colleague mentioned about the two-minute, 35-second wait time. Now, you could call Walgreens and everybody knows this, right? Call Walgreens and we could just press zero to get to the necessary operator. I want DEP, press this. If I, we shouldn't be listening to two minutes and 35 seconds of nonsense. We should be able to, and that, what that does in essence is that deters people from making the call. People don't want to call and listen to music or listen to nonsense. They just want their questions handled. They want to know simple questions, and it's, it's just ridiculous. So there's a lot of things that 3-1-1 could really knuckle down to. I appreciate the fact that you have a website, though I don't know anybody who uses it. I appreciate the fact that you have this text messaging that people could use. Again, nobody I know is using it. What are you doing to tell people, other than this technology hearing right now and me taking this information back to my district and people listening to this, what are you doing to promote other alternatives to just picking up the phone as we tell so many people and call 3-1-1 and get the help? You know, because it always comes back to my office, but, and we call the agencies. But what are you doing?
Thank you for that question. Specifically, talking about the phone channel, one of the things we do is target the exact universe of folks who are looking for, to understand other options. So we play messaging, encouraging customers to use the 3-1-1 online or use the 3-1-1 mobile app and market it as faster and easier access. What we're trying to do there is make customers aware there is a self-service option in addition to the phone channel. At the end of the day, we want the customer to go through the channel of their choice and what they're most comfortable with. But we do receive over 55,000 calls a day on average.
Sure.
And through that process, some of that messaging is designed to educate and inform the public.
The problem is, the public has got about a 30-second, really, you speak to a school teacher, the attention span is 30 seconds now. So what we've done is, it just reduces the people, it's all right, you answered my question, but I just want you to know, the retention rate and the attention rate is down to 30 seconds. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you, councilmember. I just want to ask a couple of questions about language access and then I know councilmember Holden has a follow-up. So I'm particularly interested in councilmember Ung's bill. I'll give you the number, Intro 461. I'm aware the 175 languages or so, but my understanding is this particular bill wants to focus on the app. And if I'm not mistaken, the app, the app is not in multiple languages. Is that correct?
The app is not, the app is not in multiple languages. That is correct.
Right, it's just in English.
Correct.
And what is, so this bill is really saying we would love it in multiple languages. What is the barrier to, to transitioning this app to allow for multiple languages?
Thank you for the question and the broader context. For the app itself, it's similar to the path that we've taken with the website. In order to be able to provide translation services, currently rely on automated translation services. All right? So if you use the 3-1-1 online website, if you use NYC.gov, if you use the city council website, we're using automated translation. I won't name the products, but there's a couple of big ones that do that translation, right? We would need, we need to figure out how to do that on the mobile app in order to make it available in languages. It ultimately would be an automated language translation tool.
Okay. And are you aware of any city app, where the app is in multiple languages? Where it has this automated translation feature?
I understand your question. I'm not aware, but that doesn't mean there's not any. But I'm not aware.
Sure. Is this something that you are all looking to do?
Yeah, language access, under the broader context of language access, we look at the call center option, calling 3-1-1, as well as the website as the primary ways to meet the requirements of Local Law 30, but also to increase access to the public. For the mobile app, it's something we are, we know we need, something we're looking at, something that will be part of our plan.
The bill, the Intro 461 also requires DUET or OTI to make a translated version of the app available for download on the website in addition to Apple or Google Play. Are you aware of any risks associated with downloading an app outside of official app stores?
I am not.
Okay. And then, does 3-1-1 have any plans to expand languages supported on its app or text message or social media channels?
I do appreciate that question. It'll give me an opportunity to talk about some of the enhancements we've made since we've last talked about this topic. So we actually have expanded. As I've referenced and we've, and we've shared before, we have, on the call side, when you call 3-1-1, there's an automated process. It is greeting in English, but it used, it has provided up to six languages, recorded announcements for the topics that most people call for to get quick information, for example, parking. Last year, we expanded that from six languages to the 10 designated citywide languages. So, and customers calling in those languages can hear that information. Another item we expanded and ties back to a discussion we had when you came to visit last time, was to create, I'll call it landing pages on 3-1-1 online, on the website. There are language access pages where a customer can go and they'll see on that page links in their languages, the 10 designated citywide languages. Click on one of those links in your language and it takes you to a page that's curated and manually transmitted. Click on one of those links in your language, and it takes you to a page that's curated and manually transmitted, translated in that language, and we call it how-to 3-1-1. There's two sections on it. One, it describes, again, in language, how you would call 3-1-1, what procedure to follow, give you kind of a tip. And then the second one is how to navigate the 3-1-1 website, including how to use the automated translation tool. We think it's something that customers will be very comfortable with and have an opportunity to say, okay, great, I can use this. Now I know how to take the next step with 3-1-1, and again, relying on the call center and the website.
How, thank you. That's exciting. I don't want to skip that. How many languages are supported by 3-1-1's text messaging service? Is it the same amount?
The text messaging service, we currently are going through a program where we can, we can, and we can do a translation for a text that we receive in English and convert it, if it comes in a language other than English, we can convert it and respond back to the customer.
In that same language, right? But you have a sense of, is that, is that the 10 languages?
It's currently nine out of the 10, and the 10th one, we believe we've solved the, the barrier.
I tried it, and it, in Spanish, but obviously, I was, I was hoping that it would work. But, okay. So nine out of the 10.
Nine out of the 10 right now, and I, we, we're probably close to having a solution on the 10th.
Okay, great. And my last question is, how do you all monitor the quality of language translations, both on the site, text messaging, and even using Language Line? We've had joint hearings specifically on Language Line and some of the disconnect for users, just because their languages also have dialects, different intonations, different meanings. How does 3-1-1 solve or, or perform quality control in this instance?
Very important question, something we do spend focus and time on. It does start with Language Line itself. So one of the best advantages that we have in contracting with Language Line is their size and scope, and more importantly, their business model, which works with commercial and life safety resources across the country. So Language Line's own best interest is to make sure that they're delivering quality service. Once we work with them, we're able to get an understanding of some of the best practices, some of the tips, and some of the, the ways to record, the ways to handle a interpreter call. We also have the ability to do two things. We have a contract with Language Line. We can also use another vendor to basically do translation, interpretation and, and written translations. So we will rely on a Language Line interpretation at times to validate a call if we need to, because we can use a recorded call, for example. So heavy depend, not heavy dependence, heavy partnership with Language Line, leveraging the fact that they have a vested interest in being good at what they do beyond New York City's involvement. Within that, then, we also use our own quality control structures. So we're able to go through calls if they're in a language other than English or Spanish, and we need a resource, we can bring a Language Line resource on to, to listen to that call and interpret for us.
Thank you. That seems thorough. And I will pass it now to Councilmember Holden, who has follow-up questions.
Thank you, Chair. The third round, this is great. Thank you so much.
Of course, of course.
One, one other thing, you know, again, I'm going to, I'm going back to the app. Previously, years ago, this committee had made suggestions about making complaints on the app for filming, TV and, you know, motion picture filming on our streets, and it's done a lot. We had suggested that there's, there's no way to make a complaint on the app about, and here's what happens when they film on the streets. Many times, they take over the entire block of a commercial district, and they put cones in the street, and they take over the area 24 hours in advance, sometimes even more. They take up more spots than they need, and they continue that, and they, and they abuse the, the whole street, and they close it out to any commercial work or any, any, you know, people shopping and so forth. So we, this committee made a suggestion that you put a category on filming, since we do a lot of it here. And it does, it does lack oversight from the mayor's office, because they're not, I've checked many times, and they're not even aware, the mayor's office is not even aware of the abuses. So we've asked that that be added to the list of, and it's not that hard. One more category, or at least, if you try to do that on this app, you, you get nowhere. If I try to say filming, taking up spots, blocking sidewalks, blocking crosswalks, blocking hydrants, I can't get that from the film industry. Can you, can you include that? Will you consider it? Because you told, you guys told me that a few years ago, and we're still nowhere.
Thank you for the context around that. My colleagues sitting there are probably ready to tell me, remind me what the process is for handling those complaints. But I believe it is something that we do not take a structured service request for, but instead, it's a, we, we connect the customer to the mayor's office of media and entertainment, who oversee that. So that would not allow it, so without the absence of, the absence of a service request wouldn't enable it to be available on the, on the website.
No, but on the, on the app.
On the app, website or the app.
No, but you won't consider it?
We always consider.
All right. But I, I heard that a few years ago. So if you could, it is, if you know the amount of, of filming on our streets, and if you know the complaints, because it is an invasion, essentially, to many neighborhoods. If it's in residential, it could, could have trailers all over the place and blocking crosswalks and sidewalks and all that. But I think we need something in that area, because there, there's so many abuses, but.
I, I will, I'll, I'll appreciate it, and what I'll do is go back to the agency that's responsible for addressing that and revisit what our situation is.
And just a general app request, if I could type in my complaint, and it would go, and it would actually give me a category, a subcategory, that seems workable, although it doesn't exist.
Appreciate that one. I, I'll, I'll ask you a question back, if that's okay? Have you tried the new search on the, on the request site?
Yes.
And, and you can type in.
It doesn't work.
Okay.
I'll show you, if you, you know, after the hearing, I could show you. I tried to do filming. I do, I do everything first and see if it works.
I figured you had, yep. But it has, it has, it is an enhancement where you can type in in that search, and it'll pull up options based on.
It does, but it doesn't take me to a complaint. It takes me somewhere else.
I see. Okay.
And I, I just want to stay in that app to, to file the complaint. And I don't want to go to another agency, look up a phone number, and try, you know, have to call.
I understand.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay. Thank you both so much, Deputy Commissioner and General Counsel. That concludes questioning from the members. And now we're going to open the hearing for public testimony. I want to remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding, and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topics on 3-1-1. Intros 131, 422, 461, 485, 582, 583, 584, 589, 602, 626, 634, 640, 673, 820, and 822. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of the testimony to Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov, or within 72 hours of this hearing, audio and video recordings will not be accepted. Our first panel is Christopher Leon Johnson. He was here. Nope. Okay. I'll wait a minute. Going to call him up one more time, Christopher Leon Johnson. Yeah? Okay. If we have inadvertently missed anyone who was registered to testify today and has yet to have been called, please use the Zoom hand function, and you will be called in the order that your hand has been raised. No one on Zoom? All right. Thank you, everyone, for your testimonies today. The hearing is adjourned.